Okay, it is Thursday, October tenth, seven o'clock. Calling the select board meeting to order. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Everybody on screen. Sherry, can you see and hear us? Perfect. Um, uh, I reviewed the agenda and we're changing it a little bit.
We need to add Doug on there.
Okay.
Basketball backboards.
Um. Okay, so the salt shed options were put not on November's meeting. Did you get your copy?
No, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
I got one.
Can you talk about?
Yeah. Um.
We put that on the, that needs to be an executive session without him out there.
Yep. The speed limit ordinance, we're doing that in November. And I want to, the vacancies on the planning commission, I want to do that in November.
Yeah.
So it gives us some time to together.
Um. As executive session to talk about the.
Trucks.
Did we do that under highway? So.
Yes.
Eric doesn't have to be here all night.
That's bad.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I was gonna be here all night. What the heck?
When I say it's more than.
Everybody tells me I gotta bed at firehouse and I will have one here.
That rug is pretty comfortable back in the library there.
Yeah, especially if you take the pool there and use it for a while.
About to remember.
Okay, so, um, the minutes from August eighth to September twelfth.
Uh, August.
Eight.
I think that should be August twelve.
And September twelfth? Thought it was eight.
That's the one.
Yeah. Yep.
September twelve, yeah.
I went over them. Um, and I was fine with them. Uh.
Well, the one for August, where Nellie wanted to change that.
Yeah, I was, I made a note on that.
Different, so I just didn't know, need to look at that and see that's what was. You want me to?
I thought they were just fine.
Yeah, um, I'm good with it. Yep. See, I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the August eighth and September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Oh, second that. All favor.
Hi, hi.
Um, oh, citizens input.
Sherry has her hand raised.
Sherry.
I just want to thank Eric for getting the light, the flashing lights for the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. And I know the, the stop site light is coming, but I really appreciate him getting him and putting him up.
Yeah, I do like him on that crosswalk, going the crossing thing too.
Yeah, that's really, it's not overbearing.
No, it's not.
It's actually nice.
And I think.
From a long ways away too.
Yeah.
I think if we did do it on the twenty-five down there, that does not get enough sun to, to, to keep that thing juiced up.
It's gotta be fresh too.
Yeah.
They gotta remember it's like, oh, it's right there.
Yeah.
At some point, somebody told me this one down here wasn't working right. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it or.
It was working this morning.
I've been blinking every time I've come to the room. Somebody's talking.
If it cloudy, I've noticed that if we get a cloudy day and like today, this one out here will be pretty dull. It's just solar, I mean.
While they're at night, at night though, even adult, that light being dull.
Yeah, yeah, it does. No.
And most where I was out west fighting fighters and didn't know those were, and when I drove back in, that's the first thing I saw on that in the school.
Yeah.
And I was, I mean, it just reminded me instantly that those are there for the kids. They have one kid right, they're more than worth it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Really, it, it, they get home as soon as I saw the sign it slowed down.
Yeah, hopefully they get the red one straightened out soon. Um, we'll have to read mind Adam, that, that's what they're there for though. Zooming up by today in his Porsche. Um, yeah, uh. Okay, so, um, I guess Barbara, you are up.
So I guess I have plenty of time tonight, according to you, right?
Apparently not to anybody else.
Kevin is introducing everybody that's on Zoom.
Oh, um, uh, so Barbara Nice polling from Bretton Regional. Uh, planning commission is here and is going to speak.
Yes, so. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the regional plan. Still, we're still working on it. So we finished phase one of it. And just to recap of phase one, we did twenty-seven town presentations, all twenty-seven our towns, meeting with select boards. Twenty-one pop-up events where we attached ourselves to other events going on. Um, five community open houses and we had twelve hundred, one thousand two hundred survey responses in phase one. Phase two, our goal is to do twenty-seven town presentations like this one. Uh, five more pop-ups, two feedback sessions, um, at our offices, the RRPC offices. And a second survey. And what we're doing this time of survey is, um. We want to get your thoughts and how, how the draft is going. So in the handout I gave you, um, it's, it's all of the chapters of the new regional plan. Um, and the policies we came up with. It's not the full chapters. And it's, doesn't include the actions that we'll be taking, but the overall, um, goals for that. So we've got, um, in your handout that I gave you, we've got all the chapters there of take me to one. Almost toward the end mid and working lands. Because it only has a four policy, so it won't take too long to get through. And so this is ag and forestry. Just quickly, the, the goal is encourage and strengthen agricultural forest industries. And what we heard in phase one was that there was a high demand for locally sourced foods, including farmers markets, community gardens. And CSA's and a strong agricultural system of Vermont provides access to locally sourced foods and preserves farmland. So that input came from, you know, the survey and all of, all of the places we went to. So we took that and in writing the chapter, we came up with these four policies. Um, first one to stop the loss of farmland and forest land to development. That might be a little strident, but that's what it is right now. Um, number two, ensure that the working landscape, ag forestry and value added production. Is a strong asset for the recent region's economy. Number three, ensure that the working landscape improves the health of residents. And four, enhance the health and diversity of the region's ecosystems to benefit local ag and forestry. And, um, I wrote this chapter and there's about, there's still about twenty action items that come, um. Uh, after these policies or as a result of these policies. So that's just a kind of a quick look at what the chapters are. Where we're headed with the chapters and the, the other card there will lead you to the survey. Which will show you the policies much like this does, but in a survey form, the policies for all of the chapters. And you can tell us what you think about them. So, uh, yeah, feel free to hand those out. We especially would like the select boards to, to fill those out and. Gail has had copies of that smaller wire for a few weeks. Um, and that can go out to anyone.
Dead line, we want some responses.
Um, yes, it is. Uh, the end of November, let's say mid-November in case I'm off. But.
Okay.
Yeah, you can either use the QR code there or the, the, it's on a, a special website. That we have for the full regional plan. So, yeah, we just want to work through each phase. We let you know what we've done, what we're thinking, are we off base? Um, should we change any of these things, these things, or do you like what we're doing? Uh, and so forth.
Okay.
Um. Uh, the second survey, when's that? When do you, uh, think you're gonna be doing that one?
That's, that's the one that's open through, we'll say mid-November. It's, it's open now.
Oh, it's open now, okay.
Yeah, is there any opportunity for somebody who doesn't have a computer to do a paper survey?
I don't think so. There. Um, you could, uh, call us and, you know, if one of the staff people can, you know. Call me if I'm not available. As for another staff member, we can just work our way through.
Fabulous by him.
Or I'll just go online and it won't be, you know, I'll, I'll hear the answers. It's not the, you know, the best situation, but we can do it that way. Um, I'll check with Devin if there's a way to print this out. My understanding, um. Because we get a high volume of them, it's so inconvenient to have to.
Yes, but you could be leaving out.
Right.
A substantial demographic. demographic of the county. I mean, there's a number of people in Timoth that don't have computers. It's a good point. It's small, but you know, if they're input, you need to find a way to.
Yeah, include them something. So, yeah, they can definitely call me, call Devin. Uh, Devin Neary, the executive director, or ask for another staff member. Any, any questions on what we're after?
You got a lot of information here, so that's great, you know.
And this was, um, a lot of this was actually thought over at the TAC meeting. So this would be a lot of my notes that I was gonna send you guys to read like from land use on. They talked about. Kind of what she did, you know, this was what we heard and these are the policies that.
Yeah.
Trying to implement.
Yeah, and like a town plan, all of these chapter topics are mandated by state law. You must have a chapter on working lands. You must have one on climate resilience and before.
Yeah. Um, yeah, if, if there is a way of doing paper. That'll be kind of good, especially for out here. But I'm sure Tim isn't telling me.
Oh, not.
Real town that has, that has, that has computerless people.
I know, but QR code really scares people.
Um.
Well, I just, I just want to notice that, you know, you're, you're targeting specific people, population, know how, what a QR code is and can use it if they don't. Just my two cents.
Um. Yeah, I, I've not big on QR codes myself, where I can obviously do it, but.
Another way of getting that and printing it out, though, could we do it here and distribute it somehow?
Um.
No, I, I asked Devin when I first heard about this, I said, you know, said, go take the survey. Well, where's the policy? Well, it's in the survey. You have to go, go through the, they didn't have anything available on print. You had to take the survey and under see this stuff here.
Oh, so you have to go through a survey to get to, oh.
To get.
Uh.
Yeah, yeah, and provide input. And so.
Gotcha. To get to this, you have to go through that, okay.
Yeah.
And there's a website.
Yeah, it's a dedicated website.
Okay.
Um.
For the top secret information.
Well, you're the top secret information coming from your folks.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, so, yes, their, their confidentiality and all of that kind of factors into. And, um. We could see if, we could, you know, if you do it online like that, we can see if people are taking it more than once. I'm sure anyone would want to, but in this case, but.
Yeah, I can't imagine anybody's gonna wanna do that one.
Well, it depends if they have a particular way they want to.
Right.
Steer.
It's like stuffing a ballot.
Yeah, so there, you know, there are some reasons for doing it the way we've done it. But let's see if we can get some workarounds.
Good.
How many towns have you visited so far with phase two?
Almost all of them. As usual, I'm a little bit behind. This is my second of three to visit. Um, but, uh, much more than half been around. Um, and I'm not sure. This has come up too many times.
That was gonna be mine.
Yeah.
You're going there.
That's what I was wondering.
Are we the only ones?
So, okay. Sounds good. This is more your wheelhouse than. Than ours.
Yep. Final commission.
Yeah, it's important to bring this, to get feedback too.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I definitely will.
And I mean, if anybody in, in town, you know, can give feedback to.
Mm-hmm.
So we can put this on front porch forums and direct people to the website. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
And you might want to also say, um, if you don't know how to use the QR code. Call regional planning commission and do a, uh, telephone survey.
Yeah. You, are you following all this, Sherry? That was just Doug talking. Okay, great.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and don't let the word policy, you know, scare anyone. I mean, they're pretty straightforward. You probably depend, you probably thought that about the transportation one.
Yep, for the most part, maybe a little unrealistic, but pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Lofty goals are tough to achieve.
Well, like with, like with the town plan, for eight years.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and after the actions, um, we have to come up with how we're gonna meet each one of those. And, and take that, we're gonna be taking that much more seriously this time. Hmm. When and what is gonna be done to make sure that that policy.
Right, yeah. So you have a, a long road ahead of you.
I think we all do.
Well, yes, we all do, but.
You know how long it takes town to do town plans, or you, you must, you probably have an idea.
We can rip those out in a day or two.
Oh, I forgot, I'm in Tim.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I guess I think we're all set.
Okay, great.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Do you think we have one of the salt bidders on here via telephone? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Karen Morrison from Cargill.
From Cargill, thank you.
Uh. So I guess we're gonna go to salt beds now.
We're seeing two sent out requests from three different companies who've got.
And we want to go back to the chair.
Thanks, Barbara. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Um. Okay, so I have, who do I have?
You have Cargill.
Well, yeah, I do. Um, okay, so Cargill is, uh. Eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per ton for mined rock salt. Ninety-eight seventy-five per ton of de-icer treated salt product.
Okay.
This is from, uh, Patch Appalachia.
Oh, Appalachia. Screw that up. So Appalachia, uh, has their bid amount is eighty-nine point nine nine per ton of mined rock salt. And ninety-nine point nine nine per ton for de-icer treated salt product.
What was that, ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine point nine nine, yeah.
Versus ninety-eight point seven.
Yeah. We are currently with Cargill.
Currently have been with Cargill for a number of years.
Um. And who do we have on?
We have Cargill.
Cargill's on here. Um, uh. Cargill's cheaper.
It is.
So, um, you wanna make a motion to accept Cargill's, uh, salt bid for the season?
I will make a motion to accept Cargill's bid for the season. Do you want to fill us the prices or you got that already?
Um.
One second then.
All in favor?
I am. I'm second to Melody.
Um, so, uh, we're all set. Um, you have, uh, the bid for the salt for the season.
There's probably something you need to sign there.
Thank you. Yes, if you just sign and return the quote, I'll get that processed.
Does the select board chair sign it or the road commissioner sign it?
Uh, whoever you guys want to sign it, whoever has that authority, I'm not sure.
It's a slick.
Send your hand, go ahead.
Okay, I'm signing it.
Okay, if you just scan and email that back to me, I will get your account set up tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Bye-bye.
You do.
So the guy from Appalachia actually sent something via FedEx with other information about. His procedure and everything, but it didn't come. It was supposed to come, be delivered yesterday and it wasn't anywhere. So he did send it by emails today. So we had something, but he's a guy that only had the right bid last year. And still didn't get it. Cause he was, yeah, he was way more than the other ones.
He's a bit closer this year.
And, and when I talked to him, he says, oh, the select board has the right to refuse any and all bids, so. I was surprised that he was actually willing to.
I actually brought my glasses, holy moly.
There's some like.
Well, I'm good now.
Can you reach those? You might need to read.
Yeah. I was gonna bring mine and forgot.
So John Doe.
They can act.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, um, yes.
Um, I don't really have anything earth shattering for you. Um. The, uh, line striping's done. It went good. Um, we've been grading and filling potholes. And cleaning up fallen down trees like we always do. The, uh, call. The tree guys, I can't remember their name right now, Los Bretton, from sitting there.
McColl.
McColl, yeah. They're planning on doing that work first week of December.
December.
Yep.
Wow.
He said he's not in the snow plowing business anymore, so he's putting the town work in December for multiple towns. He said if they get chased off the roads because of weather, says it's on him. They, you know, they just stop the clock and go home and come back the next day. So.
Kind of risky doing that.
We get some nice days.
We do, but.
I mean, we haven't gotten snow until.
Yeah.
True. Um.
Yeah.
Where are we at with the, with Tom coming back and doing the shouldering?
Um, I don't know that. I did not make that call. I'm sure we're on his list. Um, so.
There's some areas that are.
Yeah, there, yeah. Yeah.
You don't want to go down over it.
No, no.
You're not getting back on.
Too bad.
Right, no, there are a couple of places that are not great.
On the curves and stuff.
Are you gonna call him, Eric?
Yeah, I can call, call. I know that, I know what his answer is gonna be. He's gonna say, I'll be there as soon as I can.
Right, no, and I kind of figured that. I just wanted to kind of.
Well, he's got those repairs to do too.
Yes.
Um, so.
And are you still gonna try and see if you can connect that?
I'll ask him what, how much it is and then I'll.
Okay.
We were thinking of connecting the two aprons on the northeast road.
Okay.
There's two little, it's a Y.
Yeah.
And there's a long apron and a little baby one. It'd be nice if they came together so you didn't have to grade.
Mm-hmm.
Those, it'd be a lot nicer, smoother transition, but I don't know what he'll. I mean, if it's.
Right.
Ten thousand dollars, I'd say you're not doing it.
Right. Right. But it, he can throw it in.
We worked it in there, so it'll be all.
Right.
Um.
Right, it may depend on, usually he's ten dollar, ten thousand.
Right.
Short.
Yeah.
The paving, so maybe there'll be enough leftover from the big job.
Yeah, that would be sweet.
Um, I had a request from the cemetery committee for, um. The chipper.
Mm-hmm.
And probably the one ton.
Mm-hmm.
For, there's a big maple tree down there that's gonna go. And it would make Glenn's life a lot easier.
Yeah.
To, uh, and I figured I would just go down and help and do it on my own time and we just take that one.
The cemetery committee?
What's that?
The cemetery committee.
No, I, I'd go help.
Right, right. He's the house, he's the cemetery. Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you tell him that a hundred bucks an hour?
I did not. I figured, I said I would run it by the select board because I would rather ask permission than beg forgiveness.
Just your collection.
You can take up a collection down there.
Maybe we'll get some help.
You know.
We, you can.
You end up with anything down there. I also know. Yes, they are. Yes, I don't have an issue with that.
Um. That's all I got. Um, West Timoth. I talked to Marcel. Um, he's gonna get back to me. I'll have to call him again. Um. He's a guy doing some work on, does a bus. He does the house at the end of the road. Um, well, I was gonna get a question for that and Wells, Wells hasn't.
Then I called and he hasn't gone like.
I'm presuming that they, they, I did talk to one of their guys. They said they've got a guy who is going out for a hip replacement. So they're gonna be a guy short anyways, so they probably do not want to add workload to, but they haven't said no, but they haven't said yes.
I have run, run this by Glenn. He is fine with doing it, but.
Yeah.
If we could get him something else to do. With it, that would be ideal, but.
Well, I haven't talked to Tim Hart, who's the building's. Facility manager.
Oh, for school.
School district. In the beginning, the town couldn't, once the community center was built, they didn't have time to plow that parking lot and get all the roads done. I know last year they had a hard time finding something to do it. And so I haven't talked to him to see if he's found anybody this year or not, whether, you know, that would be something that could be done. I mean, we sand it, we sand the, the church parking lot and, and, and the school parking lot, but the school has been responsible. For the, the parking lot at the community center and the church. Just food for thought.
Will they pay us for it?
I don't know. They might. I'd have to find out if other, of the other four towns are doing it for the school or if they have private contractors for their. I can try to work on that. Private contractors for their, I can try to work on that.
Can't hurt to ask. I mean, if they're willing to pay something.
Truck update.
Yeah.
I just got this uh breakdown, I don't know if you guys have it in your. I would like some.
Back of the packet.
Yeah, I got it, I.
I would like a little bit of time to digest this.
Yes.
And um maybe the approval to get Kevin and I to go down and. Look at one of these, I cannot get, I have been trying since July to get a build sheet out of International.
Tell them how long it took you to get that one.
This took me less than twenty four hours. I've been trying since July and he's told me three times that he emailed it to me. But he did not. So um.
And then I talked to him and asked him if I could get it. And he sent me the build sheet on Ronnie's truck. On the one he's got now. So not even the build sheet for.
Well, to be fair, he was talking to the salesman, the serviceman.
Right.
So. He got something. So um.
How many pages is this about one truck?
It's quite a bit, but and you don't have.
I need to digest.
This part is the only thing you need to know.
Yeah, right.
Which isn't bad. When you start. So I've run some different number scenarios in my head, it's not, it's not horrible when you start. Going the numbers on Ronnie's truck and you kind of compared out with this and then there was a ten thousand dollar credit in Ronnie's truck for a motor issue and. Adding that back into it, we're not, we're within twenty grand. Of. We're roughly within twentyish grand of it.
Paid for Ronnie's truck with all the equipment on it.
Yep.
And then they gave us ten thousand. Separate check.
Well, I, right, but I was just.
What, how much is our equipment that's gonna get added onto this?
Wait, no, I can't remember what it, I think it was seven.
Yeah, it's, we saw it before, it's just back in months.
I think it's seventy. Seventy six in my head for some reason.
So have you, we worked with them before?
Nope. Um but they're already better to work with than.
The MB just bought one. A Freightliner, um the Freightliner and the Western Star are the same truck. With a different cab. And I asked him which one was cheaper and he said the Freightliner, I said, send me the paperwork on that one. Uh the MB has one. I was hauling sand the other day, he came down the ramp behind me.
Yeah.
And uh I got loaded, then he got loaded, so I stopped and waited for him and I picked over his truck a little bit. And um the visibility is way better. In that truck. Um and I don't see. A hell of a lot of difference other than that, um at this point, but like I said, I gotta digest this.
Right, and then who does maintenance and stuff like that?
They, they would do it, yeah. It's in Westminster. This place is. And there may be one in Burlington too, I'm not really sure.
I'd like to reach out to Centurion Ma. To see if they do warranty work, I think they do.
Yeah. But you're welcome to, I haven't, I, I have no contact with them.
Yeah, I can call him and ask him.
I've had no.
Cause if we could get a facility in Rutland. That could actually do our warranty work that rather than whatever we end up with shipping it out to.
I think at the very least, we can cover up the numbers on this one, which we like everything and then we can.
Yeah.
Use that for our bid.
That's what we've done in the past is.
Whiteout.
Block out deliveries on the top. Then here, this is, this is the. This is the equipment we want, if you got anything that's gonna be different from that, let us know, so that, you know, if you. Provide this kind of a transmission and we're asking for that kind, we need to know that there's a difference.
Yeah.
He orders these or, what he told me, he's a.
Window closed?
Uh he's a car salesman, but he. He orders a bunch of these, so he said the way he specs them. They're probably a little bit.
I just thought.
Got more stuff in them than what we usually get. He said, but he gets them less than we would pay for our stripped down truck. So just so we're all clear, I mean, it should be a pretty. Would be a little bit nicer truck, but it's still here saving money. Um if we go that way.
He's a salesman.
Exactly, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, I'm just telling you what he told me, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and I would like to talk to him.
We'll just get it in writing.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to go down and talk to him too.
Returned my phone calls and he gave me a build sheet.
That's impressive right there.
We're making progress.
Well, yeah, if you and Kevin wanna go down and talk to him, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Do we have to make a motion or disagree?
No, they're just, they're still. They're just gonna look. They're not, they're not authorized to buy anything, that all has to go out to getting.
Yeah, yeah. Where's the town checkbook? Highway end of year report.
We don't have that, yeah.
Okay. Good with that.
Executive session?
Yeah, do you want?
So uh I was given a basketball pole and backboard and hoop. And I would like to erect it on the other end of the blacktop where we fixed the other one. There was one there. And uh it fell down a few years ago.
Yeah.
So um and just wanted to run that by you guys.
Yeah. Sounds good.
That's a square, would be square.
Okay, thanks guys.
Alright, thanks Doug.
Thank you.
So what I'm thinking is for this. Warranty situation, that's what the executive session before.
Yes.
The guy from. Allegiance. Is willing to come talk to the select board about the repairs that are. He says are not covered under warranty.
Yep.
So I think it would be who of the board to talk to them, talk to him, have him come here and. Make his case.
I can do that, I can reach out to him and have him do that.
I mean, the executive session is gonna be if we needed to talk about, you know, suing him or something, but I don't think we're at that point yet, so I just think. We need to arrange for him to come and talk to the select board and the commissioner.
We can do that. What?
Up to you guys.
Say what?
Up to you.
What's your?
We should talk in executive session first.
Okay, okay.
Just real quick.
Alright, we can do that. Okay.
Just so you're.
Fine.
You have to stick the purpose to going into executive session.
Oh, well, would that be um?
How do we? Discuss the truck warranty?
I think it's more. To discuss personnel issues, it sounds like.
That works.
I'm not gonna shut it off, because the last time I shut it off. Wouldn't come back on.
Okay, so we're back out of the executive session. We will be.
Somebody's gonna make a motion.
Oh. To have Randy come to the next.
Have Randy Clark come to our one, our next meeting, ideally.
Is that a motion? Are you making?
We will, yeah, well, make a motion that we will extend to Randy Clark if he can come to our November Select Board Meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I agree.
Okay. Okay. So, next thing, where am I?
And report, your reports there are those special funds.
Yes.
You know, like the paving, that's left in paving.
Yep.
That's in the construction fund.
Was looking at that earlier. Has Fuller's billed us yet?
No.
No.
I'd say that seems like a lot.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
So right now, in the Capital Building Fund, it's a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yep.
Forty-one is the general fund.
Yep.
High, or the town office transfer station, and the highway shares a hundred and forty-nine.
Okay.
That doesn't include FY twenty-five's lot, this is for FY twenty-four.
Yep.
This was the balance on June thirty.
Six grand in interest.
Yeah.
There's a lot of interest this year, way more than.
But that's probably gonna start going down.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
And I took on people for work home with me, but I'm just so showing you that those special things are for. Definitely come to town report. Doesn't matter what you hear town reported.
I had a town report, yeah.
Yeah, page seventeen, I think. We're gonna make copies. As it describes what all those special things are for. And they're created by voters and that's what you have to use them for. If you want to use it for something else, then you have to go back to voters to ask them. You did attend a webinar a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about financial stuff. And turns out that the remove the requirement that highway has money left over that you have to use at the highway study. Now, if there's a surplus, it has to go to voters to decide.
Where it gets put.
Just like board camp, saying, wow, we're gonna reduce taxes by this, we're gonna put it in this account. You actually have to do it with voters and.
Can we just leave it in the highway fund?
Pardon?
Can we just leave it in the highway fund?
No, this isn't the highway fund.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The highway budget.
Okay, the highway budget.
Highway budget. The highway fund.
So if it's extra, it gets up town, the town voters where it gets relocated or allocated to.
The select board consent suggested on a, you know, on article at town meetings.
Yep.
We learned this in the past, that if you use it to reduce taxes, the next year, you're not gonna have that reduction because you're not gonna have that surplus.
Right.
And then when we did it twenty years ago, the budgets actually went up, so people got a double whammy the next year, so we try to put the money, if there's a surplus, tuck it in someplace so you don't have to cop up money later on. So that's what I can tell you about that right now. Because when these special funds are created, they have to be created with a purpose, and it's the only thing that we can spend. That moving.
Nine hundred and fifty-three fish and wildlife licenses sold. Wow.
That was the year.
Yeah.
That was the year before.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I know, that's, that's a lot.
It's, uh, the please, so this year it was eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Well.
And of that, the state gets seven hundred and thirty-six.
Of course, of course they do.
We get a dollar and a half for every license that's sold, so this five hundred and seventy-one dollars is actually town money. So at some point, if you need five hundred dollars to go snatch something, you can, but it's it's a separate account because the fish and wildlife comes and takes the money automatically out of the bank. And I wasn't gonna let them do that to the general fund checkbook.
Right.
It has its own little account, it doesn't have much in there that
Yeah. Yeah.
And so this sixty-dollar refund.
Yep.
This guy Mark Walset came and got his permanent license, but he didn't think he could. But I said, yes, you can. I sold it to him on Saturday, and he died on Tuesday.
Oh, no.
And in the obituary, the wife said, he was so happy to get his lifetime license.
Wow.
So I contacted Fish and Wildlife and said, hey, can we give these people back their money? She hasn't cashed a check yet, but they agreed, so they gave us a refund, so we had to give her back money. But it was the craziest thing was, because he had been told by somebody that he had to wait another year. And I said, no, you're sixty-six, you can get it. I'll come here, I'll sell it to you.
So he, y'all.
He was actually a friend of Rick's, he worked with him at Mulansons many years ago, and he would stop every now and then. He lived in Dambie, and he would stop and say, hey, say hi to Rick, and you know. So anyways, it was just, it grabbed my heart.
He's young, sixty-six.
Yeah. But anyways, that's what that
Yeah.
That's what that little.
Alright, so are we all set with that?
Looking at the next question, my apologies for this, I was getting too rape, and it was just some stuff going on medically that I gotta go get sick and tired of, and I just have no energy after, after my, do my PT at night.
Yeah.
And the copier boom.
But I think I know what it is. But I don't want it to be known to the world, so I won't tell you.
Yeah, did the copier thing just straighten out again?
Well, I put in a new toner this morning, right? It usually say, toner needs replacing soon, don't replace it until we tell you to, so said, replace it, so I took it out and I put the new one in, and I made a copy, and it was gray, both sides all gray. So the guy, I called and they came this afternoon, and he replaced three or four parts, he says, well, it couldn't be only one part, but he says, you know, that's at the top of the line, you just replace that one, I'll be back next week to replace the rest of them, so, you know, it took an hour and a half or two hours.
Have they said anything about giving us a new machine?
No, no, this one, we don't have to pay for any of the repairs, it's part of the copier lease, so, you know. I'm good with it, it, we have this one until July, and we have to replace it, but that's why we do a copier lease.
Yeah.
Many, many years ago, when we bought our first copier.
That is it, right there.
I know, this one is only
I get it.
A half years old. After three years, the expenses for repairs were so much that it was just ridiculous, so.
Yeah.
So that's why we lease it.
Yeah, no, I mean. Yep, God bless him, he's here a lot. Um, so do we need to?
Prove the warrants.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the warrants and orders.
Oh, second that, I didn't see anything outstanding.
Yeah, I didn't either. All in favor?
Night.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Um. Okay, so hydraulic study update.
I could tell you that he's been ordered, not quite how soon it will be done, but.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay.
It's underway, they don't need anybody to talk to him about it, because they're just looking at the landscape and how much water is gonna come.
Okay. Um, report from Equity and Inclusion Committee, is that something you're gonna do tonight, or?
We can, we can decide what we want to do, it'll be pretty quick. This is actually, I printed out what the actual mission is on the website, gives you a little bit of background, and and it'll get off your mind. Yes. There's one for you here. So you know, the mission of the Timothéque way inclusion is just to encourage our town to foster and welcome a culture of equity and inclusion that engages everyone, so everyone can access activities if they'd like to, um, businesses and just make it feel, it's just basically about encouraging more community engagement. So, the directives that we've had in place have been to help the residents, new attendees feel welcome in town, provide educational opportunities for the community to learn about the process at town meeting, running for public office, Robert's rules, and other important civic information to make attending and participating in the town more accessible. Engaging the youth of Timoth to sit on town committees and boards as active or advisory members. Explore small-scale housing and business opportunities in local zoning, develop new opportunities for volunteers for specific time, and detail-oriented projects instead of long-term committee appointments that can come with unclear work plans. So this year, it was really kind of the report, this, um, so we've, we've been active again in Fun Day, and we really like the collaboration that that brings with the library and the fire department and the road through. And it was, it was a great success again this year, and we have been working with Recreation Committee on the grant, um, through the Building Communities Recreational Facilities Grant, um, for the pavilion on the town green. And then we have the matched donations for that in place through community members in the plant sale, Flower Blabbers, we call ourselves, the Unity Community Fund, Vermont Community Fund, and then the Timothéque Community Fund. We have also put on the calendar, uh, in the spring, uh, March twenty-second, multicultural dinner and storytelling event, and so the idea behind that is if you have like old family recipes, um, or a recipe, like say you went to visit a different country or something like that, or had people from a different country visit and share their recipes, you know, um, we could get together and share and tell stories around those, those foods and stuff like that, so, um, that's kind of the idea of, of that. And we, some of our members attend continuing statewide meetings to continue to learn and glean ideas from what other other groups are doing, and just to continue with that network. So, that's always interesting, and we are, instead of a, a committee, we moved to have three members work on the operator's manual, and we're gonna take that up again this winter. Winter time seems to be when we would want to sit around and do that, so.
Yeah, it's a good time to not do much.
Yeah. So, um, in a nutshell, that's, that's kind of what
So, I have, so there is, I've had a couple of people. Well, one from my family. Um, they're they feel that that the committee is geared more toward people coming into town rather than existing people in town, so if I, and I don't know if you guys have talked about that.
Well, I don't, I'm
Um.
Okay.
I just, I'm, I'm just I mean, that may not be the case, but this is just.
Well, I mean, with the town fun day, that certainly is not the case.
Kevin, this is Sherry, um, is the question, are we trying to encourage people to come to Timoth? Or are we trying to make the people, the new people here welcome, welcomed here? Cause it's like, the question is, are we trying to encourage people to come here?
I think this statement was made like, they just felt like more needs to be or could be done to involve existing people in town.
I think that's what we're doing, we're encouraging people to participate. People that are new to town, just kind of showing them the ropes, cause it's, it's that it, Timoth isn't a closed group, but we're really working on people who live in Timoth participating in the activities in Tim. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, yes, absolutely, I just, that was just brought to me and, and I just brought it up.
Another event where you, Sherry, and Kim went to with leftover hot dogs and ice cream was the Recreation Committee and their ball, their slap ball game that they had, so, I mean, that, and Aileen came over with her kids, and, and so that was great.
Right.
So that does that to me is.
I know, I, I, I just
Including.
And, and the thing, and you're gonna have people in town that aren't going to do these things.
Right.
No matter how much of an olive branch you extend.
Exactly.
They're just not going to.
I think part of it is to let people know, like we put up on front porch for them, this is happening, come if you want, as opposed to stuff kind of happens and nobody knows about it.
Right, 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 yep.
I see your point. Not just new people coming in, there's people that are here for a number of years, that really don't know how Timoth functions.
Yep, yep.
How you get to them.
Right, I just thought it was something that could be explored.
I think one of the problems is since we don't have town meeting, we don't have a group. We don't get together as a, as a town per se like we usually. But how do you get those people involved is
Right.
That is important.
So.
I think they are.
Yeah, look, for instance, with the, this meeting, our informational forum that we're gonna have on Wednesday, on the sixteenth, I've invited the fifth and sixth grade class, that they can do refreshments and we'll help with, you know. We'll supplement their refreshments, but they're, all the money goes to their activity.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Um.
And then they'll, they'll, by being there, they'll be actually seeing that engagement, that community engagement, and how a meeting runs and things like that.
That will help with number three, I was kind of curious how you guys are helping with number two.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it's just something, if you could just reenter it, just kind of relate what I said to the group, and I don't know, maybe just talk about it.
Yeah, I mean definitely, you can do that.
Um, but like I said, there are people in this town, doesn't matter what you do. They're just not gonna come to you.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah.
Way it is, yeah.
Yep, unfortunately, yeah, it is.
How many meetings have you had this year? Cause I only saw what was it, May's meeting minutes posted on the website, and her open meeting logs were supposed to.
We've had a meeting every month.
So you guys might need to get some
Update here.
Videos, I think, are on the website. The minutes have been submitted, the minutes have been submitted.
Okay.
Minutes should be up there as well.
I thought it was within, wasn't it within five calendar days?
Yeah.
The draft ones are.
That was ten.
They have, they've been this high. I don't know. You know, select board don't either, oh.
We don't get in trouble, but.
So, no, we, we have, Sherry is secretary and she submits them.
For some reason, I thought it was ten, they must have changed it. Always been five?
I have.
That's quick.
I have great trouble getting committees, with the exception of Martha Stanley. Who does the record committee minutes instantly almost. She took over from Dave Leventhal, who still owes minutes from several months ago, he was not good at it. I sometimes have to pull teeth to try to get minutes out of committees. I post minutes for the select board and the planning commission, so I guess the website committee needs to figure out who's gonna post the minutes for. Other committees.
Yeah, we should probably meet.
We should.
May, maybe in December when my rep posters are talking, but we can meet before then, it should calm down in a little bit.
And there's a couple of other issues that the website needs to.
Well, I know Nancy is willing to help, you know, host things. That helps.
Okay, what was next on our?
Annual Service Agency Request, vote separately.
Cause I've just seen some of the videos and I'm standing over there and I can't even hear myself. So last year you had all the agencies voted on separately. And so the reason it's on here now is if you wanna do that again, you should give time to, for these agencies, if they wanna put something in the town report, they can. If you want to do it separately, or if you wanna do it every other year. So that's, I just put it on there just so that.
So I got to thinking about this earlier today. Since everything went through last year. Do we wanna bundle everything back together for this year? And, and separate it out every few years? I think since it went through last year. It gave, it put it in front of everybody. It went through, so we'll just put it back the way it was for a years or few years and then revisit it again. Does that make sense?
There is one, one group that only got their funding by nine votes. So I think people really enjoyed the opportunity.
So maybe every other year.
These five, we're gonna vote on individually and then the rest are just gonna be in the group, but.
Um, last year when you discussed this, one of the suggestions was you would pick so many each year to vote. And then the others would ride and they would just kind of rotate. As a voter, I found that list. A lot to vote on, and I think that if you, maybe every. Take the number you have, divide by three and that numbers you would vote on. Sort of each time, that way people have fewer to look at and they can think more about it. It's hard to think about, I don't know, twenty five or, I don't know how many there were last year, but it was an awful lot to think about. As opposed to just voting yes, 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 or no, no, no.
It was, but my, but my thought behind that was to, because it's been a long time. Since they were revisited, I just kinda wanted to get them back out in front of folks.
I agree, but now that we've done that, if you could do it in smaller chunks. Can think about, okay.
That, that way if we do it in smaller chunks, we can also invite them to come and. Say who they are and what they're about and what they've been doing. Marshall, saying something?
Alphabetically, or we could do the ones that were most contentious first, or.
We could do that.
Start with the ones that pass, I, I, I don't know, I mean. Different ways of looking at it.
I.
You can think about it and what other people think, I don't know, you don't have to decide tonight, but we should probably decide by the November meeting so that we can.
Right. I kinda like the idea. I mean, this is my opinion, I kinda, I guess I kinda like the idea of. Since everything went through last year, doing them all. And then doing that for a couple of years and revisit them again. But, I mean, this, we can do a different.
Are, would follow that, otherwise we might end up the same thing of, nobody's looked at in twenty years and everybody just says, yeah. Then spend all this money on stuff we don't know about.
Right, right. Well, yeah, we can talk about it, uh, think about it.
If we can get the list again, I know it's in one of my packets, you know, the results of all that.
It's like I got it in my desk.
Get the results just fresh in our mind, I think that would help too.
Something also might be helpful if we send all these service agencies a letter that says. While, I mean, it's, there's maybe ten that send us information of every time and some people. Don't ever send a request, but we, because we've approved them in the past.
They kinda just.
I would think maybe we could start by sending every ten, a letter that says. You know, we're trying to figure out our process, you know, if you wanna be included, we need something from you that says. Back in the, back in the old days, Ernie Bulley, when he was on the select board and he had to write out the orders. He wouldn't write an order for anybody unless they actually sent a bill. And we got away from that after a while, you know, after he got off board and, you know, so we. Now we pretty much automatically send it to them, but I, I think there should be some give and take. There's some agencies on there that.
Right, and I think everything on there for the most part is worthy of, of.
Fifteen years ago, we had a committee that looked at all of, all of them and tried to figure out who not to support and they came back to the select board and said. They're all worth the hundred bucks or the eight hundred bucks or whatever it is we give to them. But I did notice in looking at some of the other town reports that there are other agencies. That are asking other towns for money that they don't ask Timoth for money. And we give money to some places that other towns don't include. Right, they're supposed to, in that letter, the cover letter, we should say, you know, you need to prove how you are serviced, serving.
Especially the elderly service, stuff like that.
Right, those are, people are pretty good and they, you know, they'd say we've served so many families in Timoth. You know, we did this many meals or something.
Yeah, so we could do that, we could pick a chunk, have them come up with a, and then rotate it and do it that way. The ones that have been very good with approaching us, we can just be like, you know, well, they're good to go.
So do we wanna make a motion that we'll do that and then at our next meeting decide which ones?
No, we can revisit it at the November meeting and then just, and then, okay. Prep for. Rachel Town Meeting on sixteen. Basically, it's just gonna be who, so Holly's gonna moderate and then I am. Assuming the bulk of these questions are gonna be for you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, and I, yeah, can, I wanna just warn it that it's going to be a. You know, informational forum type of meeting, it's not a. I don't know, it's like a special meeting, but it's also just informational, just like what are in those minutes, you know?
But I also want to, I'd like to word it. If people have questions about it, I want them to, I want them to ask, I mean, I don't want them to be.
Kind of what you put in front porch forum. And then to. But that it's a. It's a select board meeting, but it's also, it's an informational meeting, is what it is. Because that way, people, I want people to come and I want them to ask questions and I want to be able to give answers, so. Because sometimes people think, oh, select board, I don't need to go to that, you know, so I wanna make it, you know. This is an informational forum, you know, and it's kid friendly, I wanna, I'd like to structure it to that. If people come with, you know, parents and there's kids there. That, that they would get priority for comments or questions that they have so that they could leave. You know, that's the other thing I think would be good to do. And I can talk to Holly about that too, you know, just kinda how we.
But I would like to, I just don't want people to. I guess, I don't know how to word that, I just don't want people to feel discouraged with asking questions, I, I want them to. To do that. But there is information we're not gonna have. Because there is, there is gonna be water questions. We don't have that yet. There is gonna be grant questions and we don't have that grant, we don't have that yet, so.
But I did talk to. Eric, I can't think of his last name. At Otter Creek Engineering. And I, he, I told him the situation, we went, we stopped over there when we were in town. And then telling the situation and I know that, I, I said, cause. The Mark Youngstrom was the one that did the community center. And. The engineer for all that, and I said, you must have plans, you know, from, from way back then. And, and so he had me send all the details of this project and. His suggestion, he, he didn't say anything about the, the swale because that would still be. Pervious. The only thing he talked about was the roof and he said you could add an extra. Gravel, line of gravel on either side that would help with the water, you know, and he said that it. So there wasn't any like big red flags for him with it, with it.
Um, hopefully the hydraulic study guy gets back to us.
Right.
It said it could take a month or two.
Right, yep.
Depends how busy they are.
Okay, and we're doing this at what time?
We're supposed to be there at six forty.
Cause I gotta start coffee.
Yeah, I'll probably go around six thirty so I can drink the coffee.
Oh, it's not gonna be ready then?
You want some Starbucks coffee to. Serve, somebody brought some to the.
Serving the good stuff, holy moly.
Well, we might as well.
That is a lot of coffee.
I make it.
I love coffee.
My boss wanted me to learn how to make coffee, I'm like, no, that's not my job.
You don't like coffee?
I, I don't like coffee, no.
How do you function?
I don't drink coffee either.
You don't?
In the house growing up, so.
I didn't drink it until five or six years ago.
You grew up on a farm, coffee didn't.
My parents didn't drink coffee, dad still doesn't drink coffee.
My grandfather drank a couple pots of coffee a day and. Uh, okay, so members' concerns?
I have on my to do list. At least my mental one, I'll add it to my physical one to email Spencer Howard about the. Culvert inspection, cause it is the beginning of October now.
Okay, yep. Yeah, and I'll call that guy, November meeting. Yes, yep. Miscellaneous correspondence mail.
Send something around about the electronic bid.
That's on my to do list as well.
We did the executive session. Uh, next meeting, October sixteenth and following November fourteenth. The hell happened this summer?
I don't know, it's a fever.
Everybody watching or listening, northern lights tonight and tomorrow night.
Yeah, so.
Dev Markowitz, it's the second period state, and it was like this little phone tree. Anybody saw northern lights, you were supposed to like call people all over the state.
You call anybody if you're on the list, all I say is northern lights and hang up. And if you had, you wanna go out and look, we'll go out and look, but. And she was on that list as well, but, and I, and tomorrow night, there's, there's been a big. Push out the sun, it was supposed to be like way south. We should get a real good.
Yeah, we gotta call like that one.
Alex got some great pictures of them the other night.
Your camera will pick up way more than.
Isn't that incredible? Right, okay, so I guess, uh, meetings adjourned. Um, so the. Um, Central Vermont Communications got back to me this afternoon, they're coming up Monday. To do the radios for Glenn and I, and he's gonna fix the radio in the tanker.